Thank you, Carissa. It's five oh two and I'd like to call the East Line Board of Ed Special Meeting, December fourteenth, East Line Board of Ed Special Meeting to order. For all of us who can stand, who can stand for the pledge of leaving.
To the flag of the United States of America. For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And I think where we start, can I ask for a moment of silence for on town's eleven members today?
Yes. But yeah. Um, the next sort of business started. Is public comment or you know, your any public comment? Any public comment? And hearing on what we will put comment and we move on to the first item discussion, action item, discussion, action for the proposed appointment of Board of Education member. So just kind of recap from Monday's meeting. We needed some clarity and interpretation from our attorney to make sure that we manage the process appropriately. Which is important and I'm happy we did that. I think it was the right decision to table it to today. To make sure that we had an aligned process and it's process that we have a definition from our attorneys. And that is our process going forward. So we had practice before. But now we have an official process. So this is kind of the process that we will and all the board members have received a copy of that. So how we left last meeting, we had a nomination and a second of one candidate. So that still is open. And then we're going to open for other nominations. And then we'll go through the next step of the process. So the step that we're on now is are there any other nominations? Or Board of Ed seat?
I would like to nominate Olivia Fairchild for the Board of Ed seat, please.
I'll second it.
Nice.
Who seconded it?
Jill's.
I second it. Thank you.
Jamie nominated Olivia and Jill seconded. Okay, so are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? One more time, any other nominations? Okay, so I'm going to close nominations. For the open vacant board seats. So then the next step in the process to is to have each of the candidates. Get a little overview of yourselves and tell us a little bit about yourself. So maybe let's start with that first. And then Olivia, you'll follow. And then we're going to hold questions and then we'll do Q and A after each of the candidates go. And then we do Q and A. You can either ask individually each candidate or you can ask each the poll candidate here's the question I have. Can each poll candidate answer? You're on now. Thank you. And appreciate your patience of a week and whatever days that it took to get here.
Thank you. So I thank you. And I I totally understand and that is that is important. We need to get the process right. I'm Vivek Purohit, forty-eight, Heritage Road, East Line. And I stand before the board as a candidate for appointment to to the Board of Education. My family and I have decided in East Line Town for the last sixteen years. I have a doctorate in pharmaceutical sciences and I am employed in the pharmaceutical industry. I'm a parent of a recently graduated Viking who is now a college freshman. He is in attendance today because he's home for Christmas. He benefited from the school system and I feel responsible for serving the schools and the community. Only satisfaction for me is to see others and my town succeed. If I'm appointed to the board, my focus will be on academics, arts and technical education. My priorities will be looking for creating opportunities for students. Support teachers so they have the resources to help the students who need help and challenge the students who are advanced. Work with all stakeholders to produce responsible budgets. School programs have a great impact on promoting and ensuring a positive school climate. Programs in arts and music, health, wellness, school to career programs. Contribute to the positive atmosphere and provide learning opportunity opportunities for the students. I recognize the balancing act the board faces each year of maintaining budgets versus protecting and enhancing programs. And all tax taxpayers should feel the benefits. I believe I'm up to that. As a father of a recent graduate, I have observed and experienced the school system for twelve years. We moved to East Line for the schools and I'm proud of what the school system has done for my son and every other East Line student. I hope to bring a fresh perspective for creating growth. And develop opportunities for our students and maintain the high standards that the East Line schools have set for themselves. I recognize that the board is responsible for setting the goals, setting policy and approve budgets. For the board to be successful, each member has to embrace embrace the mantra of stay in the lane. I bring real world experience of having worked in a highly regulated industry where adherence to protocol and process are central tenets for success. In my role in the industry of of my employment, I am a strategic thinker and a team player. Today, I represent the town of East Line and offer my service services in good faith. I strongly believe we can do more for our students with the current infrastructure and I hope I can contribute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vivek. No, no, so we're going to do questions after Olivia go up and then at the end, then we'll ask each candidate candidates questions at the same time.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to be here with you all on Thursday night. My name is Olivia Fairchild and I'm seeking appointment to the Board of Education. I'll start with a little background about myself. I grew up in Pennsylvania. I loved being a student. I was so happy to be in the classroom. When I was in high school, I was a student liaison to our borough council. So the borough council is very similar to our Board of Selectmen here in East Line. The student liaison does what the student liaisons who are often here at the Board of Education meetings do. So I would work with the school district administration and I would prepare a report of upcoming events, pertinent issues, all the news relating to the school. Hear that with members of the public, the borough council members, and then at the meetings, I would prepare notes and share that back with the administration. So in this experience, I just learned that I loved serving my community in that way. I thought that the overlap between municipality and the school district was very important and very interesting. Flash forward a few years, it's time to go off to college. I'm a Penn State graduate. We are. And I graduated with bachelor's degrees in economics and business management, concentrating in organizational leadership, business and law, and minoring in equine science. Through college, I was a tutor. I was a teaching assistant. I was a resident assistant. And I interned with the youth development program. All of these experiences really just helped to foster that love and passion of working with students and helping them to reach their goals. So after college, when it was time for my first job, I started a job at Electric Boat. We were looking for a place to live in Connecticut. The first thing I heard about East Line was it has great schools. So that was my priority was just moving somewhere that was known for this exceptional education system. So I moved to East Line twenty twenty. And while I've been here, I've served as alternate to the planning commission. This was such a wonderful experience for me. It was it was a great way to serve our fabulous town. But education is really where my heart is. So on a personal level, education is important to me, but I think it's also very important to our town. So all of these students are going to grow up to be our residents, our leaders. They're the future. So in May, I was just interested in the Board of Education. What do you guys do? What do the meetings look like? I was just curious about it. So I decided to come by and sit in and watch a meeting. When I tell you, I absolutely loved it. I was so excited about all of the work that the board does. I was inspired by the student presentations. And from there, I'm seeking appointment because I'm excited about learning more and being a part of this team, giving back to and participating in our wonderful community. Thank you.
Okay, so. Next step is questions. So you can ask questions directly to a single candidate or just ask a question and ask both candidates to answer. We'll start when there's questions for both. We'll just alternate those first and so they have chances to go first on questions. So opening up our questions.
For both. So obviously, the Board of Ed tackles many different issues and whatnot, but like in your opinion or like, what do you see as being like one of the most pressing issues that we would need to in the next, you know, twelve months or so, like the board should address or like?
We'll go back. You went first talking, so we'll go Olivia, but the next question will go.
Um, so I think budget is the big one. And so when I've been coming to the meetings, I've been taking little notes about things that I thought were important, were really interesting. So one of the things was like the math tutoring program with the math coaches and the literature coaches and those sort of things. I don't know if they're necessarily like a crisis issue, but I think they're very, very important to the system and the school.
Okay, so. The immediate needs, of course, we have we have to get the budget right. That that supports the entire pro all the programs that 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 need to run. And I think there there has to be a focus. In in it is immediate and it's going to be, it should be a continuing focus of the school system is is creating opportunities early on. So that students don't have to double up when it comes to the junior and senior years. Right now, there are the number of opportunities available for students who are advanced. Going into high school, they're limited and they end up having to double up. And that's puts a lot of stress on the student body. And that's something I think we can we can address easily, you know, provided we plan for it. But yes, budget and then maybe creating opportunities for kids who are advanced. And also kids who need help, we need to identify them before they get into high school. Because get once you get into high school, it is very tough to catch up. You need to we need to get the help to them sooner. So those are things in my experience, I think we can do better and I hope we can prioritize those.
Thank you.
This is, I guess, a follow up question to that. That was a great question, Esteban, for both Olivia and Vivek. Totally hear you on what you think is most urgent. I guess my follow up to that is what are you most excited about or what energizes you? I'm hearing a clear passion for education, but from coming to the meetings and listening to the work and maybe the answer is budget and that's totally fine if that energizes. But if you want to offer another, you know, aspect of being on this board that you're really excited to dig into, be curious to hear what that would be.
Yeah, 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 you got it. Yeah. What I'm really excited about is means I saw my son succeed in the school system. And I want to see the same happening to other kids in the school system. And I want to I want to continue the tradition of success that East Line schools have have built. So that's my, that's what I'm really excited about. I I've learned a few things based on, you know, one anecdotal experience. But I think there are some some things that can be broadly applied and I I hope hope, you know, that we can do that as a group. And that's what I'm really passionate about. I want to maintain the excellence that that the East Line schools have have set for themselves. That's 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 my main passion.
So I am really excited about hearing the student perspective. So we had, there was a meeting where like a student came in and presented about the chemistry Olympiad. That was so cool. I was so excited about that. And I love like the data presentations. So they had the math presentation, the course selection, the healthy eating. And I just love seeing all the opportunities that the Board of Ed, the schools work together to provide for all the kids in town.
Lisa.
Thanks both for presenting to us. Your enthusiasm is clear. And I my question is more around. So we are, I think. Representing one board with a variety, we come from like diverse backgrounds, right? We have just diverse approaches to kind of collaborating as board members and and working with each other. And I just wanted to ask if how you would describe your kind of your approach to problem solving or or leadership or just working, you know, amongst other. Others in a in a manner to kind of make decisions or problems solve. And how we could kind of expect to be working with you guys.
So I definitely liked to have all the facts first and hear all the sides of the story. So I'm definitely like a team player and I want to come to a conclusion. It's what's best for everybody. So it's a win-win, not just like, oh, somebody has to concede, somebody gets their way. It's this is the best third option that we've all come to this conclusion together. We know it's the best thing for everybody. So I love to read and do research and and all of that sort of thing. So that's a big part of what. When I'm making decisions, I'll look at case studies, facts, like data, the sciencey kind of side of it too.
Um, in. When it comes to the philosophy, we I I I'm, you know, as a board of Ed, we all have the same goal. You know, we may have different ideas, but we all have the same goal. And once, once the goal is established, it's a matter of identifying what's the best way of achieving those goals. And for for me. Across across pollination of ideas, looking at what 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 perspectives other other board members are bringing to the table. And coming to a consensus which allows us to achieve the goal is is the way we, you know, I approach things. And in terms of problem solving, it 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 is all, it isn't, there's no one way. There's not never one way. We have to, we have to look at all possible options and see what's what's the most efficient and the way the what what allows us to. Get things done within our means, because that that's the other thing that we cannot lose sight of, you know, it's getting getting to a goal, having very high objectives, great. But do we have the means to get there? I think that is that is a compromise we we as a board member have have to reach. So that's that's my philosophy.
Mine's not a question. It's just a statement. I from both, it's just my. What I've learned from listening to you both speak, neither one of you are coming in here with what seems like an agenda or a political idea or narrative, which I I liked that. I did not hear that from either one of you. I mean, it makes me happy. But that I also wanted to say that I liked with Vivek, you said that, you know, we're here for policy, we're here for budget, we're not here to micromanage. And that is our main job. We're not here for the micromanaging of Jeff. We hire Jeff. Jeff does his job. That's our purpose here. But our purpose is not only to Jeff and the students of East Line, but our purpose is also to the children in the state of Connecticut. So we have to make sure that the laws that the state of Connecticut passes, we are actually enforcing also. So I just wanted to make that generally statement, but I've liked that both of you did not put politics or agendas into your approaches tonight and I really appreciate that.
A closed question. All right. So for both. Just curious, I've put a lot of energy into a new. Altering climate initiative. And I'm just interested to know your view of what what does the healthy school climate look like? Okay, who was?
I'll change it for that in a very second. Thank you. From my, from from my, the limited experience I have and from limited thing, you know, what I've seen in the school. It all all comes down to programming, you know, if you know, if if the students are engaged, if the students are happy, the students' needs are being met. We we will eventually get get to a a climate or a culture that is that is acceptable to everyone. I think that's 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 the the that should be the priority. And and and, you know, learning about each other should should also be something that can be can can be built into the system. You know, we all come from diverse backgrounds and and knowing what 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 the backgrounds are is something that we can learn as as a community. So that's, I think that is what is going to contribute to to the best best climate.
Um, yeah, so echoing that the opportunities for students, sports or extracurricular activities, music and art and all of. All those things that aren't your core classes, I think are really important for culture and climate. And offering them the opportunities that. If there's something that a student wants to do, they don't really have to pick and compromise. They they get to follow their dreams. They get to do that that thing. And then with the teachers and staff, the same thing that if there's an elective or something that, you know, a club, an elective, that sort of thing. That at least like consider the option. Add that in, I think, but you know, the field trip. So I keep coming back to that chemistry one. That was so cool. Like that was the coolest thing ever. And that's the kind of thing I would have loved to have had the opportunity in high school. So I think that's like a sign of a healthy climate. And then also, when you do the surveys that student satisfaction survey where it's like, are you involved? Do you feel like you have a home? How, taking that data, how can we work together to make everyone feel included? And to make everyone feel like they do have a home, maybe they don't want to be involved and that's okay. But they have the option and they're welcome if they want to.
Say one. First of all, I wanted to thank both of you for really being willing to run for the Board of Ed. I think for me personally, it sometimes is a bit of an overwhelming position, position, because I take it very seriously. I've had a child in the school system and once you've had a child going through the school system, I know if everyone else agrees with me, I think you have a higher level of enthusiasm. So I guess what I'm trying to say, the point I really wanted to make is. It is a fabulous, fabulous opportunity to give back to your community. And I think everyone would agree with me on that and I I wouldn't have it any other way. But sometimes I have to watch for me personally, because I had a daughter, I only had one go through the school system. And I was in that elementary every day. I sometimes still want to get involved in the minutia. And that's really not what we're here for. It sure is fun to talk about. But we're not here for the minutia. It is more the policy, exactly what you said, Vivek. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I really love what I do here and I feel very, very lucky to be on the Board of Ed. And I hope you guys come to feel the same way. It's been a fabulous twelve years for me and I. I would not leave until I vote it off.
Oh, wow.
Anyway, thank you. Thank you for letting me express my personal opinions.
If I could just say one thing too, to both of you, thank you again for your willingness and consideration for this appointment, these appointments. And I am probably going to reiterate to some extent, but in my own caveat, it is so important that we hear your voices. I know when before Eric was our board chair, there are a couple of people I noticed when I first joined the board, they were a little bit quiet. And I I kind of pinged him about it later and say, did you notice so and so really didn't have too much to say? So your voices are really important to be heard. And we we need that diversity, I guess, to weigh in on on whatever it is we're trying to make a decision on with as much information as we can gather. I know it seems like a large board. It is to some extent. I'm sure Eric and Jeff feel that way especially. But we do have value in it and I think the collegiality that we will develop will be really exciting and I look forward to working with both of you. Thank you.
Okay. No more questions? We're good?
The show on the road.
Um, so thanks both of you for your. Your talks and answering questions and and stuff. So in terms of the next step of the process is we have our vote of just prior to passing out the ballots and going through that. I do want to pause for a second and and thank Laura. Laura decided she told us as a board that she decided to resign. She, I hope she'll hear this, but she she was a great member of the board. Her insights, her background and insights are kind of second to none when it comes to school and the district and understanding kind of beyond. With her education background and understanding is is phenomenal and she, you know, really worked hard to contribute and. She found a way, you know, we talked a lot and she found ways to contribute at times, you know, she's in Florida now and and trying to figure out. And that was hard, but she always figured out on the important issues, she'd always give an opinion. And as Kate talked about her voice, you know, she she spoke when she needed to speak. And and she was a valuable member of the Board of Education. So appreciate Laura and hopefully she'll hear this. I've told her this already, but I hope she'll hear this as well publicly and, you know, thank her for her time on the Board of Ed. And because Laura decided to resign, there is actually our two seats open. So the way we will handle the ballot is we're going to pass around ballots. You can make sure you write your name on the ballot because it is public. We will read the. And each person can vote for up to two. You can vote for one or two. You can vote for up to two. If you don't vote for a person, you do have to acknowledge if you're abstaining or just not voting for them. Okay, because if you're abstaining, that does matter for the vote count. Because you guys saw how the counting works. So that the abstention does matter first. So we'll pass these around. And remember to write your name and then the nominees up to two that you're voting for. Very nice. Doing a reading as soon as you come to the past. Oh, perfect. I'll just.
That's what I just did. Well, that's why I'm picking. I'm picking long. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks.
The chapter's sweet.
Maybe one second.
And then, yeah. Name and then. You can just read first things.
All right, go ahead. I'm ready. All right, Jill. Vivic. And then Olivia.
Are they both yeses or nominating nominees for? So they're voting both.
No, if you put the name down, you're not.
I wrote yes. Okay, yeah, okay.
And then Kate. Vivic, yes. Olivia, yes. Esteban, Olivia, yes, and Vivek, yes. Eric, Olivia, yes. Vivek, yes. Bill, Olivia, yes. Vivek, yes. Jamie, Olivia, yes, and Vivek, yes. Lisa, Olivia, yes, and Vivek, yes. And then Lee, Olivia, yes, and Vivek, yes.
Yes. Okay, so congratulations to the look unanimous. It took a little longer, but it all all worked out and that's great. So. It took a little long longer, but it all all worked out, and that's great. So we actually have something that we haven't done before. So normally you'd wait and you then go to the town hall and you gotta get sworn in, and then you kind of the next meeting, you sit at the table. But Jamie is.
She would like to sit tonight.
Yes.
I can swear you in. Oh, yes. What is that?
It's up to you guys if you want to be sworn in tonight instead.
You can sit at the table for the the budget, the most exciting budget meeting. Need the same whether you start tonight.
It's gonna be the same either way. All right, can you raise your hand?
Olivia, do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the East Line Board of Education to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes, I will.
Vivek, do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the East Line Board of Education to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations as well.
We have name plates that we will order for you, so.
You guys are welcome to have a seat.
So the next round of business is the budget.
Is a board comment.
A board comments, you're right.
And I do have a board.
Okay, yes, sorry.
So I was plotting the two calendars we approved at the last meeting. And the December twenty-third meeting is during Christmas break.
The December twenty-third. Oh, okay.
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanna look at it.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Other board comments or future agenda items? Thank you, Jamie.
Maybe I'm sorry. I was thinking about the excitement of the new board members. What did you just say?
The December twenty-third.
Next year from now.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So yeah, I apologize. That's all I got.
Okay, sorry, here.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
That's a can. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Okay, meeting is adjourned. So why don't we take five minutes and start at five forty? We'll start the budget workshop. Let's settle.
Are we going to the library?
Laura, ready here.